The city of Barrie acknowledges the traditional territory of the Anishnaabik people, which include the Odawa, Ojibwe, and Bada Wataumi nations, collectively known as the Three Fires Confederacy. We also acknowledge the Wendat nation Huron, who occupied these lands prior to the middle of the 17th century. We're dedicated to honoring indigenous history and culture and recognize the enduring presence of indigenous peoples on this land. We're committed to moving forward in the spirit of reconciliation and respect with all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit people. You may be seated. Before we get going with the city council meeting, I just want to couple of housekeeping matters. I'm still dealing with a little bit of a tick, so if you'll bear with me at points if I need it, I'd appreciate that grace from council and from members of staff as well. Additionally, we have a policy and set of procedures for council meetings. We don't allow signs inside of the chambers, and that's pretty standard across all council chambers. So I'll ask that the sign there, whoever it is, be removed. Is there somebody who can put up their hand and say that they own it? Perfect. Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate the respect and certainly appreciate you coming tonight. I'd like to welcome you all to Barrie. And we're going to move into the agenda. The first item on the agenda we're going to deal with is to welcome back our student mayor, Nyla Francis, from Clotterington Public School. Nyla will provide her closing remarks on January the 8th. So she'll be joining us for another meeting at the general committee meeting. I actually thought it was it was quick last week when they said you were starting last week and ending this week. So you get to you'll be like the longest-serving student mayor in the city's history. So well done on that. And probably the best, too. And I only say probably because I was there once. So we're going to move into the confirmation of the minutes. The first item on the agenda, the minutes of the city council meeting held on December 4, 2024 have been circulated. Are there any corrections from members of council? I'm seeing none. We're going to proceed to the I'm going to, at a later point, ask for a motion to reverse two things, being the presentations and the direct motions, so that we can hear a presentation before the direct motion that I think has been circulated at this point can be can be heard. Because I believe that you'll want to ask questions and receive answers prior to us deliberating on the matter. And I'm going to ask, are there any deputations with regards to 24G 259 Doors Open Barrie or 24G 261, the waterfront property acquisition in Ward 1 and 2? Those were approved earlier this evening. I'll do a second call because it's on matters we dealt with earlier this evening. Any deputations with regard to the waterfront or Doors Open Barrie? Do a third and final, any deputations? Okay, seeing none, we'll move past the deputations on committee reports, directly into committee reports. Deputy Mayor Thompson, that's yours.
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harvey, that Section A of the General Committee Report dated December 4, 2024, as circulated, be received.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Harvey, that Section A of the General Committee Report dated December 4, 2024, is circulated to be received. This is a report of the Finance and Responsible Governance Committee from November 27. Any questions or comments with regards to the motion on the floor? I'm seeing none. All those in favor? It carries. Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harvey, that Section B of the General Committee Report dated December 4, 2024, as circulated, be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Harvey, that Section A of the General Committee Report dated December 4, 2024, is circulated to be received. This is a report of the Finance and Responsible Governance Committee from November 27. Any questions or comments with regards to the motion on the floor? I'm seeing none. All those in favor? It carries. Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harvey, that Section C of the General Committee Report dated December 4, 2024, as circulated, be received.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Harvey, that Section A of the General Committee Report dated December 4, 2024, is circulated to be received. This is a report of the Finance and Responsible Governance Committee from November 27. Any questions or comments with regards to the motion on the floor? I'm seeing none. All those in favor? It carries. Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harvey, that Section B of the General Committee Report dated December 4, 2024, as circulated, be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Harvey, that Section B of the General Committee Report dated December 4, 2024, is circulated to be adopted. 24G 254, Reserve Fund International Relations Committee; 24G 255, Community Project Fund Submission from councillor G. Harvey Regarding Graffiti Removal. Are there any questions or comments with regards to the motions on the floor? I'm seeing none. All those in favor? It carries. Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harvey, that Section C of the General Committee Report dated December 4, 2024, as circulated, be received. Sorry, Mayor. Nuttall, I'll just reintroduce this. There was a correction that needed to be moved. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harvey, that Section C of the General Committee Report dated December 4, 2024, as circulated, be adopted.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Thompson. Moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Harvey, that Section C of the General Committee Report dated December 4, 2024, as circulated, be adopted. This is 24G 256, the 2025 Business Plan and Budget City Operations and Infrastructure Investment Funding Portions. Are there any questions or comments with regards to the motion on the floor? Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall. I have an amendment to this section. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harvey, that Motion 24G 256, Section C of the General Committee Report dated December 4, 2024, be amended by adding the following paragraph eight: "The Capital Project PR 1188 Fleet Replacement Program Active (Page 36 of the Capital Plan) be increased by $1.6 million in 2025, $2.4 million in 2026, and $2.5 million in 2027, with the entire $6.5 million be funded from the Fleet Management Reserve. And G. The Capital Project EN 1564 Waterfront Multipurpose Youth Artificial Sports Field (Page 79 of the Capital Plan) be deleted, with identified funds being transferred to the new Capital Project Downtown Barrie Sports Field and Cadet Parade Grounds to align with Motion 24G 223, adopted by City Council on October 23, 2024."
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Harvey, that Motion 24G 256 of Section C of the General Committee Report dated December 4, 2024, be amended by adding the following to paragraph eight: "F. The Capital Project RP 1188 Fleet Replacement Program Active (Page 36 of the Capital Plan) be increased by $1.6 million in 2025, $2.4 million in 2026, $2.5 million in 2027, with the entire $6.5 million to be funded from the Fleet Management Reserve. And G. The Capital Project EN 1564 Waterfront Multipurpose Youth Artificial Sports Field (Page 79 of the Capital Plan) be deleted, with the identified funds being transferred to a new Capital Project entitled Downtown Barrie Sports Field and Cadet Parade Grounds to align with the Motion 24G 223, adopted by City Council on October 23, 2024." Are there any comments or questions with regards to the motions? Seeing none. All those in favor? It carries on the main motion. Are there any comments or questions from members of council with regards to the 2025 Budget and Business Plan? Councillor Harvey.
Yeah, just maybe for the public. Obviously, we just added another $6.5 million. That was actually just more of a housekeeping due to some oversight earlier on. So to continue with the funding that was actually already pre-approved in the previous budget, so that way people don't think that we've just gone and added another $6.5 million. It was already pre-allocated. But I also would like to thank you, the staff, and everybody, the amount of work that went into this. Because I've been here for on my second term now, and I can honestly say this was the most streamlined budget process that I've been through, not having to worry about starting at several percent and having to go through things. So I do appreciate the amount of work that you and staff put into this, leading up to this even coming to council and to finance committee. And as Chair of Finance, it's much appreciated. And I think this is one of the good things with some of the provincial changes that we have seen when it comes to being able to get things done much quicker and more streamlined. So thank you. And I don't want to say too much to take your thunder on this, because this is the first mayor's budget. And I think it's shown how effective that it can be, because it came in at a 0% right off the bat, because that was your direction to staff. And there's several key projects that that are included in this. And one of them, being in my ward, that has been asked for by the public since 2019. So on behalf of the Ward 7 residents, thank you for spearheading the fact that we are now going to be looking at adding a splash pad at the Peggy Hill Community Center, along with included in the budget is also new basketball courts and also new pickleball and tennis courts on the same property. So there's a lot that's going to be happening at the Peggy Hill Community Center, and I think it's going to serve our residents very well. And I will just leave it at that, because that's the only thing that really focuses on Ward 7, because I don't want to speak for others. So thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Yep, councillor Congle.
Thank you. I might, just because it has been such a streamlined process, take a moment to draw attention, I think, as councillor Harvey noted, Mayor Nuttall, some pieces that we did add into capital. And in particular, for residents of Ward 3 and those that enjoy Little Lake, if you did not catch it, we did look at what's embedded in the motion before you as an addition for funds to really look at a boardwalk for Little Lake, knowing that for years, public safe access to the lake for things like canoeing, kayaking, and bird watching has been requested. That was tied into a Little Lake master plan that didn't move forward. Well, it is coming back to be looked at. I think this is an acknowledgement that we do want safe access to that beautiful other gem in the city for appropriate use. And so I do appreciate that. That is something that has been heard through residents both across the city that actually come to that area to enjoy that naturalized space. So thank you for that.
Absolutely. Are there any other? We do love Little Lake. Are there any other questions or comments with regards to the budget? Councillor Harris.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Nuttall. I'd be remiss if I didn't draw attention to the commitment to the Performing Arts Centre. I think, again, on the list of really important pieces of community building infrastructure, the Performing Arts Centre has sat there as something that has been a goal. And since the decision was made not to renovate the Fisher, but to actually tear it down, the pressure and the importance only heightened, and also with the changes that Georgian College has to their theatre, again, the importance of a performing arts centre for our arts community only became that much more important. And so to see, as having been the started the Theatre Reserve last term, to actually be proactive, to put money aside for something that we really needed, then as the Chair of the Performing Arts Centre Task Force, which councillor Reitman, councillor, pardon me, Deputy Mayor Thompson, were part of as well, it's exciting to see now a commitment to the theatre. So it's greatly appreciated for all those who've spent many years advocating, promoting, and supporting theatre. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from members of council? Well, members of council, I just want to say this isn't the reality is it's not it's not even the mayor's budget. We, as a team, said where we wanted the budget to go. We talked about projects. And I can say that I didn't dream any of the projects up, right? You gave your feedback. You know, councillor, there's been a few that have been named here already. The Rec Centre, I know our two Southend councillors, Southeastendee councillors, who are Rec Centre-less right now, have been pushing very, very, very hard for that. That's in the budget as well. The Fire Station 6, which we know is an important piece of infrastructure for southeast Barrie, it's in the budget. The movement of the cadets is in the budget. Lighting over in Ward 6 that was requested is in the budget. And that's not because of anything I did. That's because of the advocacy that each of you have put ahead for your for your community. And there's a plethora of items in the downtown, councillor Nixon, so I don't want to go through them all, because we'll be here for far too long. But your advocacy, I think, is literally going to pay dividends for the community and for your communities and wards you represent. So thank you for the work that you do. But it literally is the hard work of our of our staff. And we've said this a number of weeks now, and I'm going to say it just again. Craig, Clean, all of the folks in finance, if you can please make sure they all know how thankful we are. And I think that I can speak on your behalf by saying how thankful you are to the rest of those who are involved across the corporation that made this this budget work. It came sooner than normal, in a different process than normal. And I think that we had broad buy-in. You don't get a 0% increase on the city operations without broad buy-in, you know? And so I'm excited by this budget. I'm excited by the last two. The amount of infrastructure work that we're getting done, you know, it's a pain in the you-know-what when you're trying to drive down a road that's under construction. But the reality is, we have, as council, as a team with staff, really, really put a priority on getting infrastructure built and getting those projects, those city-building projects done that have been talked about for eons. So thank you so much to our our public servants. And CEO Prouse, I know I said this before, but if you can make sure that thanks is spread across to those who don't sit in front of their TVs watching Barrie City Council on Wednesday nights. Okay, any last questions or comments? Or seeing none, I'm going to call the vote on the 2025 Business Plan and Budget. So all those in favor? And it carries unanimously. Where was Sergio on the recorder vote?
It's funny, Mayor Nuttall, because longtime viewers of council will remember, and I was told this when I came in 10 years ago, that you would call recorder votes on the acceptance of minutes, or just for fun. So I don't live up to your level of recorder votes, but it's a it's a fun time.
There's multiple ways to do a filibuster. Let me put it that way. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harvey, that Section D of General Committee Report dated December 4, 2024, as circulated, be received.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Harvey, that Section D of the General Committee Report dated December 4, 2024, is circulated to be received. This is 24G 257, report of the Affordability Committee dated November 27, 2024. Are there any questions or comments with regards to the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor? It carries.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harvey, that Section A of the General Committee Report dated December 11, 2024, be received.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Harvey, that Section A of the General Committee Report dated December 11, 2024, be received. This is 24G 258, report of the Affordability Committee dated December 4, 2024. Any questions or comments from members of council? Seeing none. All those in favor? And it carries. Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harvey, that Section B of the General Committee Report dated December 11, 2024, be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Harvey, that Section B of the General Committee Report dated December 11, 2024, be adopted. 24G 259, Doors Open Barrie; 24G 260, Proposed or Pending Disposition of Land Matter, Surplus Property, LGL 005-24. 24G 261, Waterfront Property Acquisitions. Are there any questions or comments with regards to the motion on the floor? Seeing none. All those in favor? It carries. Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harvey, that Section C of the General Committee Report dated December 11, 2024, be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Harvey, that Section C of the General Committee Report dated December 11, 2024, be adopted. This is 24G 262, Proposed or Pending Disposition of Land Matter, Surplus Property. Again, it's LGL 006-24. Any questions or comments from members of council? Seeing none. All those in favor? And it carries. I'm now going to ask for a motion for the floor. Do I need a motion for the floor or just agreement? Procedure motion? So we're going to proceed with the presentation from Hemson first, and then council will have the opportunity to debate the matter inside of a direct motion. Following that, is everyone in agreement that we can change the schedule of the meeting to allow for that to happen? Just get nods from everybody if that's okay? Wonderful. So that is what we're going to do. I got to jump in my notes, if you'll give me a moment here. So at this point, I would like to bring forth the presentation from Hemson Consulting, Joint Land Analysis Stage 2, and call upon Stefan, I'm just going to say your first name, because I don't think I'm going to do your last name any justice. I apologize profusely, and Michael Skelly of Hemson Consulting, who are joining virtually to provide the presentation. Welcome to Barrie City Council this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I've been asked to share my screen, so I'm just going to attempt to do that. And so you can just let me know that you can see the presentation on screen when it appears. And I will begin. Is that showing, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. We can see the we can see it right now.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, and thank you, members of council. And as the mayor mentioned, I work at Hemson Consulting, and we've been retained to look at the long-term land requirements for the city, as well as the neighbouring townships of Oro Madonte and Springwater. It's part of a process involving four municipalities, the city, the townships, and the county of Simcoe, and a process that's also being supported by the Office of the Provincial Land and Development Facilitator. The work really, at this stage, and this will be the purpose of today's presentation, is to summarize the findings of the answers to two key questions that we were asked to look at. First was whether Barrie, Oro Madonte, and Springwater have enough land to accommodate their projected population and employment growth 2051. And if they do, then really, you know, we can end the process there and pick it up again in 10 years, or whenever the city and the county next do their official plan updates. But if the municipalities don't have enough land for their long-term needs, then what options are available within a defined study area to accommodate its growth? The study area is shown on the map there on the screen, covers the boundary between the city and two townships. I did just want to begin by sort of acknowledging the somewhat unique role that Barrie plays in this study area, and indeed in the broader region.
Sorry, sir, you're 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 cutting out in the middle of your presentation. It might just be where the microphone's positioned.
Is that better, Mr. Mayor?
It's it sounds good, but I think as you move around, it comes in and out.
Okay, I'll try and stay fixed in this spot. Yeah, so I did want to just emphasize the the important role that the city plays in the study area and in the broader region, because of its size, its centrality, and the scale of growth that is taking place in Barrie. But also that Barrie plays sort of a regional service centre role, and is also the prime mover in this municipal process. In other words, the process is very much responding to claims and proposals by the city. So much of what you'll see in this presentation is a response to these proposals. I don't, having said all that, want to marginalize the fact that the townships of Springwater and Oro Madonte and the county also have their own land needs. And we have looked at those and will report on them to you this evening. But I want to start with the analysis of employment areas, because it's really the city's claims about a lack of employment lands that that initiated this process. And and I do first also want to acknowledge city staff's concerns expressed earlier today that we at Hemson may have included natural heritage areas or NHS areas in our assessment of the city's employment land supply. And so I just wanted to be clear that we specifically excluded designated NHS areas from our analysis. And we also excluded additional environmental constraints that we saw when we visited these sites from our estimate of the vacant land. But we'd of course be happy to review these assumptions with staff. We want to make sure that that we've properly reflected what's on the ground, and we're happy to do that in the coming weeks. But with that caveat, our assessment is that the city, the city's long-term employment area supply appears to be sufficient to meet the forecasted growth to 2051. We looked at the assumptions and the calculations done through the city's municipal comprehensive review between 2019 and 2022. There were some fairly ambitious assumptions about the density of employment on the vacant lands. And we also noted that the city is planning to build out every scrap of employment area over the life of its official plan to 2051, which isn't which isn't which isn't great, because you always want some kind of vacancy available to allow people who want to come in and locate here to have the kind of choice that they need to make those decisions. But taken together, the city, in theory, has enough long-term land supply. Over the long term, would probably need some more ahead of 2051, sometime in the 2040s. But that that can be reviewed and updated as part of its official next official plan update. That doesn't necessarily need to be dealt with now. However, there is certainly a shortage of market-ready shovel-ready lands. Part of the shortage arises from the city's need to expedite the delivery of water and wastewater servicing to its lands. Some of it's tied to provincial investments that are required to build interchanges on Highway 400 to unlock some of the lands in the southern part of the city. And some of it is tied to the fact that some of the configurations of the existing lands are unsuited to allowing people to, you know, amalgamate large parcels of land and build those sort of employment clusters that are extremely. So I certainly don't want to underestimate the the importance of shovel-ready lands, and they, of course, are a concern. But shovel readiness, in our view, can't really be solved by the proposal to annex land to the city. And you can see on the map here, in the orange areas there, these are the proposed boundary expansion areas. The rectangular area in sort of the northeast part of the city in Oro Madonte, and then these these areas to the to the north and to the west of the city in the township of Springwater. I just also want to make clear that there's been various iterations of this map. And the one that is being shown here is the one that was proposed to Springwater Council in November 2023. So we're certainly aware that there are various iterations. Moving into Oro Madonte, I mean, this township is blessed with a lot of employment lands along, very well located, along Highway 11, including a very strategically located group of land parcels around the Lake Simcoe Regional Airport. The county official plan is premised on all of these lands being built out to 2051 at rural employment densities. So on the assumption that at rural employment densities, so on the assumption that servicing is not provided to these lands. Certainly, if servicing was provided, then the, the employment growth potential of, of the township would be greater than what's set out in the county official plan. But that growth forecast is in line with what the township is already planning for through its employment land strategy. It does not need any additional in our view. When we look at the lands in Oremadonte that, that have been proposed for expansion by the city, our view is that these lands are not particularly well-suited for employment areas for a few reasons. But perhaps more importantly is that they don't directly address, as I mentioned before, Barry's lack of shovel-ready employment area. So just very briefly, you, you can see the lands here. You know, there are, what's in green is about 40% of, of the land base. That's undevelopable land. And then the yellow and the orange, these are agricultural and rural lands. Some of them are, are actually in agricultural use, so you know, our, our sense is that notwithstanding that there is water and wastewater servicing available along the western edge, along Penetangue Road here, these lands would take some time to develop. They would need to be subdivided. There are existing uses. There's a rural road network here that would need to be upgraded and would probably need to be intersection upgrades to allow, you know, the volume of truck traffic that we might expect to get in and off this highway. So it does present challenges, we think, and doesn't really meet the city's needs for shovel readiness issue. Unlike Oremadonte, Springwater has relatively few employment areas, and none are adjacent to the Highway 400 corridor. And/or indeed this important Highway 26 corridor leading from Barry to Wasaga Beach and Collingwood. Springwater's employment areas really serve local rather than regional needs. What warrants special attention really is whether the township has enough land to provide the range of employment opportunities it needs, given the amount of population and housing it is planning. So that, especially in the Midhurst Secondary Plan, which we'll talk a little bit more in a second. These are the lands that Barry has proposed for sort of boundary adjustments for review to Springwater. And just very quickly, these are also problematic, we think, for certainly addressing Barry's short-term supply needs. You know, these areas here to the east, very well located from a highway access perspective, certainly. But some topographical constraints, I mean, they're not particularly flat terrain for a lot of large users. Bringing services across the highway corridor to, to this parcel up in the brown area here, potentially problematic. People have mentioned Little Lake already this evening, and, and certainly goes without saying that there's a lot of environmentally protected, environmentally sensitive lands around here that are probably not suited for industrial or business park uses. This portion here to the north of the city, very good land topographically. But once Midhurst is built out, these lands will be squashed between a large residential area to the north and a large residential area to the south without great access to the highway. So there are compatibility issues for sure with these lands. And the lands to the west, more possibilities. They are very close to employment areas in the city. Better access to Highway 400, but you can see that there are some environmental constraints here as well. And so the total land area available, perhaps not, not hugely, not a huge game changer, let's say. So just to summarize on the employment area land needs assessment, want to emphasize strongly that the Highway 400 corridor, both south and north of Barry, is an extremely important economic corridor. You know, linking the north and south of Ontario, and Barry is a very important stop along the way. And the demand for this land for a range of employment uses spans both local and regional needs, but also national and international needs as well. And local municipalities and the county are planning for these lands to be developed, putting infrastructure in place to support that demand. You can see down in Bradford West Gullimbury, where, you know, services are now available, instructions occurring at pace. In Innisville, servicing, you know, imminent but not available, construction occurring a little bit slower. No reason in our view why Barry's employment areas in the south, once serviced, wouldn't be similarly attractive. And in fact, there are some advantages that Barry has over, over many of these other areas. Very close to a large labor supply, good rail and transit links that the other, the other areas perhaps don't have. So, you know, in summary, Barry's employment area supply, we think, is sufficient, at least in theory, to meet long-term demand. Do not want to ignore the short-term supply issues. But the case for annexation for land in Oremadonte and Springwater to solve those short-term issues, we think is relatively weak. Now I want to just move to community areas and just stress that community areas are centered around the needs for housing. And the supporting infrastructure and services and local retail and institutions like schools that, that are needed to sustain residential community. So it's a, it's a broad range of sort of community and neighborhood uses. And I want to just spend a minute or two describing the housing market dynamics that we need to understand when we talk about the city's needs. Because, you know, each municipality here is not sort of a, a little universe unto itself when it comes to the housing. There's very much a recent, regional housing market, and there is an interplay between the supply and demand of land in each of these communities that, that, that I think we need to understand. So what this chart does is it shows you the, the annual population growth in the Simcoe Census Division, which captures the whole county and the cities of Barry and Arilia. And so the, Barry's population growth is shown in green, Arilia's in gold, and then the rest of the county in red. And you can see here at the beginning of the century that, you know, Barry accommodated most growth in the Census Division before 2006. It was one of the fastest-growing urban places in Canada at the time. And then around 2006, 2007, it ran out of greenfield land. And growth slowed considerably. The 2008, 2009 recession didn't help at all, and, and, and that hit growth across the whole of Ontario. But you can see coming out of the recession that Barry's greenfield supply remained constrained and growth remained low, whereas regional housing demand was met by growth in the county. And that's in the red here, and, and, and growth really accelerated quite rapidly, peaked in 2017. And then as Barry's supply came back into play, we can see the, the shift of the demand being met in the city as Barry's supply comes, returns. The point about this is that, you know, the demand for housing is a regional demand, it's relatively finite. Barry has certain advantages that make it very attractive to key segments of the housing market, especially the apartment market. People like retirees want to be near the hospital, people like students want to be near the, the Jordan College. But, you know, so I want to recognize that dynamic. The other thing I just want to point out very quickly is that the form of housing in the city has changed quite significantly. So, you know, in Barry's wave of, of development and growth in the late 90s and early 2000s, most of the housing that was built was single detached units, and that's shown in the green portion of the bars here. But now, in this sort of later wave of growth that we're seeing recently, much more, to a, to a much more diverse housing mix being constructed. The red is, is apartment forms, and, and the gold is, is row housing. And this current slowdown, by the way, in 2023, 2024, has nothing to do with supply and everything to do with the high price of, relative high price of, it's an affordability issue. The other thing I want to point out too is that although Barry, Barry's growth has picked up, it is still not as fast as it needs to be in order to meet its 2051 official plan population target. The current growth, growth trajectory is shown in the white line here. And the dotted blue, green line is the growth trajectory that the city needs to achieve in order to hit its 2031 housing pledge. And the gold trajectory, for long-term land needs, is the more important one. That's the trajectory that it needs to be on in order to achieve the 2051 population forecast. And I'll come back to that at this point about the rate of growth. But want to first just test, you know, the, the, the official plan and its goals for achieving the 2051 population target. So what the official plan does is it commits 50% of all new homes to be built within the existing built-up area of the city to 2051. And then the remaining 50% of the homes to be built in the greenfield areas of the city. And just a few numbers for you, because I think we need to understand, make sense of the, the land needs numbers later on. The municipal comprehensive review that the city undertook as part of the official plan process, I, you know, was planning for 56,000 units between 2021 and 2051. Growth up to 2021 was less than what was anticipated. So actually, in order to get to 2051, the city now needs to build 62,000 units. Half of those, as I said, will be in the built-up area, 31,000, 1,000 units a year. And half of those will need to be in the greenfield area, again, about 1,000 units a year. So if we look at the built-up area, these are the units that will be built as intensification. These will mostly be apartments. And, you know, when we look at the performance, the intensification performance of the city since 2019, we see that, you know, the city has been building about 35% of all homes, mostly as apartments as intensification. So it's, it's very different kind of range and mix of housing from the past, but it's still not 50%. And it's 35% of a much lower number than is needed to, to hit the population target. So certainly you can see the evolution of the housing, the pattern of housing, but there needs to be many more cranes in the sky, so to speak, in the downtown areas every year to 2051 than what the city has right now in order to meet that. Certainly, the city's plan has a very detailed and progressive plan for achieving and promoting intensification. There are all sorts of strategic growth areas set out in the city to, you know, promote higher-density units around transit stations and nodes and corridors. And the city's done some great work to put infrastructure plans in place to make sure that these can happen, and the development charge bylaw to make sure that, you know, it's properly paid for, and so on and so forth. So I, I just want to emphasize that this is an ambitious plan. It represents a truly transformational pattern of growth moving forward. And we can start to see the evolution of this plan taking place on there. And I now want to move to the greenfield areas, which is where the other 50% of the units need to be accommodated. So most of the greenfield land, as you know, in, in Barry is in the southern part of the city. It's within the, the sort of, the areas bounded by the red lines here. There's lots of green, which is sort of non-developable land, environmentally protected land. And you can see here these areas covered by the green hatching, which covers, you know, about 50% of the, of the, the greenfield areas in the south. These, this hatching represents lands where there are active development applications. So we have a pretty good idea of how the greenfield might develop because of the, because there's so many of these applications, both in the sort of the form and the density of what's being planned. So just a reminder then, so we, we need 31,000 units within that greenfield area. There's about 17,000 units that have either been built or are under review in the application sort of status. Of the 4,000 units that have been built, 11% are apartments. And of the 13,000 that are in the application review stage, about 45% of those are apartments. So there is a disconnect between what is actually being built as apartments and what is in the plans to be built as apartments in, under review. And, and we think it's a legitimate question as to whether the, this level of apartment construction is sustainable in the greenfield, given what's actually happening. But more importantly is what's required on the remaining vacant lands. So these are lands with no applications at all. There's about 350 hectares of them, and the city would need to squeeze 14,200 units on that vacant land in order to achieve its target. And the question is whether that is possible. And, and I think our conclusion is that it's probably not. But how much land the, the city is short rather depends upon a few assumptions about, you know, density. You know, the reasonable density we might expect in the greenfield areas on those vacant lands. So we've done two scenarios here. One assumes, scenario one here assumes that the 50% intensification is achieved and that the units that are in the application review stage get built exactly the way they're planned, so 45% of them are apartments. And that that level of density, which is very, very high, continues on those vacant lands, those 350 hectares. If that was to play itself out, the city would be short of land, 265 hectares. Scenario two, we think, is important to test because we think this is a more realistic view of what might actually happen. Again, with this scenario, we assume the 50% intensification is achieved. But here, we assume that the units in the applications and the units on the vacant land, the vacant lands get built at the kinds of densities that we would see in very dense GTA suburbs. And under that scenario, the, the, the city is short about 630 hectares. So just want to summarize by saying that, you know, like other municipalities in the Greater Golden Horseshoe, Barry is planning for much more compact development, more intensification. It's got a very ambitious plan, and we can see the, the fruits of that plan playing themselves out on the ground. But the intensification rate that's currently being achieved is lower than what's required and with much higher growth that is needed. And on the greenfield lands, the density of development needs to be much higher than anywhere else in the Greater Golden Horseshoe, and certainly very different from what is being constructed in, in the city. And just to give you a flavor of the, the scale of the difference here, we estimate that on those vacant lands, the 350 hectares, the, the city would need to build, you know, you know, communities that have about 100, 100 people and jobs per hectare. And when you compare that to what's being planned for elsewhere in the GTA, you can see that the equivalent figures in York Region would be anywhere between 55 and 70 people and jobs per hectare. It's a little bit higher in Peel, 70. It's a bit lower in Durham Region, 53. But, but very importantly, in Simcoe County, in Springwater and to the south, 45 to 55. About half of the density is being, being planned for in those areas. And this is important because these areas are part of the same housing market as Barry. So, you know, want to emphasize the point here, if Barry's supply cannot meet the demand for the type of housing that people want to buy in the greenfield area, they will not forego a single detached home and live in apartment. They are far more likely to buy a single detached home in a neighboring municipality, either Innisville or Springwater or someone. So that's the risk there that, that we see in doing this. Just want to finish up with some concluding remarks about the townships. So Oremadonte's community area land needs are sufficient to accommodate the growth that is being planned for under the county official plan. The county forecast is forecasting a slight shift towards, you know, higher-density forms, but ultimately there is no, none of that is premised on, you know, a sort of, a huge shift towards a more urban settlement area structure than what currently exists in Oremadonte. It would still remain a sort of, a very different kind of more rural place than certainly the city of Barry. And indeed, in Springwater, Elm And indeed, in Springwater, Elmville currently is the only service settlement area. But of course, there are big plans for the Midhurst Secondary Plan area. And there's a lot of land, vacant land, approved land in that area. We think it's enough to accommodate all the demand to twenty fifty one, regardless of whether Midhurst proceeds faster than what's expected under the county official plan. Now, you can see here, though, that, you know, Springwater's, what's in the Springwater development pipeline is quite significant, lots of development there. How quickly it proceeds is is very much an open question, but certainly the township has done a lot of work to put into all the infrastructure pieces in place to to allow this stuff to to proceed. So just, Mr. Mayor, wanted to conclude with our findings. We think the case for additional lands for Barry is relatively weak if we're only talking about employment areas. But there's a relatively strong case for Barry needing more land for housing. And if annexation is going to occur, to the extent that, you know, that's sort of once in a generation kind of exercise, that that should probably done be done in a comprehensive way that includes provisions for employment areas that meet needs beyond the twenty fifty one timeframe. And we've we've got two scenarios here then that that would pick up both community area employment area land needs, about two thirds, one third ratio in both cases. Scenario one, based on the plan, Barry densities would be about just under four hundred hectares. And then the scenario two, which we think is a bit more realistic in terms of the kinds of densities in in the greenfield areas, with nine hundred and thirty hectares. And as I mentioned at the beginning, we were asked to sort of speak a little bit about options for dealing with this. And there are, of course, many options, but but it's at sort of broadest level, there are there are two pathways here. One is to say that, you know, the current municipal boundaries, as they are, stay fixed. And we think what would happen in that case is that Barry's residential growth would continue as it currently is. It would become denser as time went on. But you would reach a point probably in the mid twenty thirties where growth started to slow because you couldn't meet the demand for the full range of housing that that is needed. In that case, some of the demand would shift and some housing options that are unavailable in Barry would be absorbed by the surrounding municipalities. In such a case, it's quite possible that Barry may have excess capacity in its municipal systems and facilities. And it would it would certainly continue to service surrounding areas as a regional service center for major health and education institutions. That would lead to the need for developing servicing agreements, cautioning agreements for services with neighboring municipalities, and ultimately, some kind of regional governance model to manage growth and manage the complexity of those agreements. The section pathway would be would be to follow options that look at adjusting municipal boundaries. Certainly, growth could continue within the study area under this scenario. But in order for Barry to achieve its population target, that would involve the need for additional lands, some kind of annexation scenario. But exactly how those are configured requires additional analysis of, you know, engineering servicing requirements, financial impacts on all the municipalities involved, and so on and so forth. And we've been asked to prepare a sort of a a high level work plan that might flesh out what might be required for that stage three work. And that would engage a range of experts, including civil engineers and natural heritage experts and some forecasting and municipal finance as well. But we have those on the team waiting to to do the work as necessary. And we will do the work plan in short order. So, Mr. Mayor, that was that concludes my remarks, and I'm of course happy to answer questions.
Yeah, thank you so much, Stefan, for the presentation. Certainly, a lot of information for all three councils and the county of Simcoe to chew on, if you will. And I'm going to, if it's okay with members of council, I'm going to lead off the questioning here. I know that I've been most involved in this along with our chief administrative officer. I'm going to ask you, if you could, to go to the map that showed the different areas the city of Barry originally requested. Okay, and I'm going to ask our clerk, can you share the map that the city of Barry originally put forward? No, no, the the one with the five areas there, Madam Clerk, the No problem. Let's wait a moment for that to come up. Okay, thank you. So Stefan, can you see this or no? Stefan, did we lose you there?
Can you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
We can now, yes, sir.
Yeah, yes, I can I can see the map, yeah.
Okay, wonderful. So on the map that you've shown, numbers one, two, three, and five are present, but four is not present. Is that
That's correct.
Perfect.
That's correct.
Okay, so I just want to, there's been some confusion on this. And and before I move on to explain this, I just want to ask Stefan, the map that didn't include number four, was that provided by the township of Springwater?
The map that does not include number four?
Yes.
That was the map that was, I believe, presented by the city to Springwater Council in November twenty twenty three.
Did Springwater provide that information to you, that this was the that that was the request that had been given to them by the by the city of Barry?
They certainly they confirmed that that was the presentation that was made to their council, yes.
Okay, I believe that presentation was made confidentially. Number one, in a confidential meeting. So I'm not sure if that township has released those meeting minutes along with all of the information encompassed in it. But for the record, we should note that this other map that's being used was part of a confidential presentation to to Springwater Township. And so before I get on to asking further questions, I think I should probably explain this to the rest of members of council because you voted on a map and you voted on allowing us to go and negotiate. Number one is Oromodonte. That's the block that we'll get to in a second with Stefan. Number two is Little Lake. And that is the area where we're hoping to bring into the city of Barry. We own most of the land except for two parcels in this area, at least the immediately pieces that immediately surround Little Lake. And our goal is to work with the province on conservation in that area. Number three was actually proposed by, not by us, let me put it that way. And so if you want to know who it's proposed by, Springwater Township will either have to release the minutes or you can ask them. Number four was asked by Springwater at a previous meeting to when we made the presentation to be removed before we made the presentation because they felt it would be very offensive to some members of council there. And number five was brought forward by, again, not us. We need to ask Springwater Council who wanted to look at number five. So just to put in perspective on the map that's and the other map that's in the report, that is what has been floating floating around. And that's why numbers three and five are in there and why number four was was not. And so I want to make sure that we're completely transparent with our council and the public as to what was being talked about, how it was being talked about, and the reasons for for that. I'll now ask you to bring up the map of Oromodonte in the presentation from from Stefan.
Thank you. Before we move on, either now, before you move into the Oromodonte parcel conversation, just to clarify, while you've talked about two different maps being shared, confidential or not, the one that's actually in the package, is that what's on the table for conversations with the province? Or is the one that's being displayed the one that we need to be paying attention to tonight? And that's a comprehensive look at all aspects of the potential boundary changes?
So you're asking me, I'm going to speak for me and then Stefan. I think if you ask Stefan, he would say the one that shows the the light colored area right around the whole northern border of the city. Because the stage where they estimated what the need is is complete, but the stage where they are estimating what the lands are is not. So that's from the inside the presentation. But the map that was showing a request from the city of Barry inside the presentation is actually inaccurate of what our originating ask was. And there was a piece that was taken out as part of a request prior to going to to Springwater Council. And there were two pieces that were added in that weren't in the original request that I brought before with Michael to our council. And so I just want to make sure we're all on the same page because there has been some changes to that map over time in different iterations. And what's reflected inside of the PowerPoint presentation is not reflective of what council originally saw. Neither is it reflective of the accurate Barry ask.
So to clarify then, for the this evening's conversations or questions, is there anything out of scope for us to be asking questions on regarding the parcels? Based on the one that you've displayed, is that
No, you can ask questions, for sure, for sure. Okay. Is it just a clarification? Yes, we're going to put up the Oromodonte map first, and then we can bring that back and forth, yeah. The Could we share the presentation from earlier again there, Madam Clerk? I'm sorry. Oh, Stefan, could you share your presentation, your screen again? Wonderful. That was the 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 map I was referring to. Now, there's one that's just the Oromodonte piece that's in orange, I believe. And it shows the natural heritage area as well, right there, yeah, perfect. So in this portion, it says that Barry's employment needs, specifically in the short term, I think it's referring to, can't be dealt with inside of this area because it's not for servicing sake. So what was the issue there?
Well, Mr. Mayor, the certainly there are there are water and sewer pipes along Penetanguishing Road. But I think that when you look at those lands and you think about what they might develop at and might need once they're developed for employment uses, there there's a there's a certain amount of time that's required for the planning of the lands and for infrastructure improvements to the the road network within those areas, subdivision of lands, and certainly the intersection with the highway, which involves right now a one hundred and eighty degree, single lane turn ending in a T junction with a church and a cemetery and and a and a sort of bridge underpass under the highway. So it's a complicated area up by Napoleon there for, you know, just one truck to get in off the highway. So so there are there are things that need to be done to these lands other than just hooking up to the water and sewer pipes that are available on Penetanguishing Road, we think.
Right, and I believe that the Penetanguishing intersection is about three point seven kilometers, maybe three point five kilometers from the current city of Barry border, which is which is not far from the the northern edge of that that yellowish area there. Is that, did you calculate that about the same?
I'm just looking at the scale on the map here, and I I think that's about right. It may even be less than that, yeah.
Okay, and would there be upgrades required on Georgian Drive?
Honestly, I'm I'm not sure that I can be definitive about the scale of the infrastructure needs that are required. That would be that that, I think, would need some sort of qualified engineer and would be part of the stage three work.
Right, so we have a four lane road there that's two point two kilometers from the same piece of property that goes on to one of the most updated intersections on the four hundred series highway. Is that correct?
I take your word for it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. My other question I have for you is, are you aware that the city of Barry's been granted strong mayor powers?
I am aware, yes.
I understand the designation in a typical plan takes, you know, an extended period of time. Are you aware of the timeline it would take? Now, let's pretend it's not employment and it's just residential. Are are you aware of the timeline that it takes to work through the the strong mayor powers to designate properties for development?
I'm not.
Okay. The current, what's happened in other municipalities is essentially thirty days, twenty one days to thirty days is required for notice to the public, so you can hold your public meeting. Once a public meeting is completed, at that point, the strong mayor powers can be used. And there would be fifteen days beyond that to for council to veto. So essentially, in sixty days, we we could designate that what what is needed. Now, that's not my preferred direction, I'll just be clear with council and the public. But the timelines associated, I thought, were interesting. The other question I had is, what is the Oro people and jobs per hectare number? Because we saw Springwater, we saw Barry, we saw Markham, we saw, you know, lots of GTA, but what's Oromodonte's?
Yeah, it's a good question, Mr. Mayor. They don't actually have one because they don't have any designated greenfield area under the growth plan. So there isn't a there isn't a target for any greenfield area for Oromodonte under county official.
And do they have a do they have a housing target then?
They don't actually have a housing target, they have a population target.
Okay, and do they have an employment target?
They have an employment target, yes, they do.
Okay, and that's the lands that showed in the map really showed around line seven and the airport road?
Well, some of their, the majority of their employment would be on those employment areas, but there there would also be employment associated with the community areas, you know, retail stuff and and some rural, there's some rural employment as well in tourism related stuff in in Oros as well. So but the majority would would be on the employment areas.
Okay, I'm going to jump over to the report on the existing city of Barry because I think there was some, there's certainly some confusion. There was a request by our chief administrative officer prior to this meeting asking about the annexed area or not annexed area, hopefully annexed area if you're sitting where we are, that talks about, is it developable acreage and hectares that you're speaking of? Or is it is it is it total? And I think that that may have been confused in the presentation here because I don't believe that question was asked by our staff with regards to the existing city boundary today. There was a request given in that looked at our current city lands and asked what the what were the properties that were studied to determine what the developable areas were that were left inside of Barry for industrial purposes. And I believe, Stefan, you sent that over to us maybe Monday or Sunday, something like that. So thanks for the quick turnaround because it was only on the weekend that I asked for it. What I looked, everything, just to be honest with everyone, I I don't know a lot of the properties because it says the legal description, I don't have the time to look up this legal description. So I looked for some properties that I already knew. And I'll give you an example, a couple of examples, actually. CTV and and Madam Clerk, I think you have the CTV one here. We're going to kick them off again, aren't we? It's nothing personal, Stefan, we're not meaning to kick you off. So my understanding is that the piece So, my understanding is that the piece that you see on this map, that is to the east of Beacon Road, that's wide open, is the current CTV studios and land. And then the rest of it around has some sort of green and purple to it, which I believe indicates some sort of environmental sensitivities. Ms. Banfield, can you confirm that for us?
Mayor Nettle, you're correct. Any of the properties that you see with that kind of underlying or overlying hatching are just represent, represent different levels of environmental protection, so level 1, 2, and in some cases, 3.
Thank you so, thank you so much for confirming that. So I'm very dangerous with our Berry GIS and the Simcoe County GIS, so please don't get me down to the acre, because I will undoubtedly be wrong. But that portion of property, that is the current station area, I had a count of 22 acres in size. But the spreadsheet that showed the developable area was 26.47 hectares in size, or I believe about 60 acres, is that? Is 26 hectares 60 acres, Ms. Banfield, is that right? Ish? Ish. So I was only able to look at three, because I only knew three properties. This one was roughly a third of what was in the spreadsheet. Innisburg Golf Course is designated, and we don't need to pull up, we can go over another time, but Innisburg Golf Course, which is mostly designated environmentally sensitive area with creeks running through it, and a lot of Rob, sorry, Rob, a lot of Deputy Mayor Thompson's golf balls, ravines everywhere, trees. It's designated here to say that there would be 30-ish hectares of industrial land there. 30 hectares, I think, gets about 70 acres, if I'm, if I'm calculating it right. And that property, I think that we've identified about between 5 and 10 acres of available use. And then the other property was the Pope Lands, which we've looked at, and about, we believe they're somewhere in the 40 acres out of that 70 that's available for use. So, when we're looking at the actual numbers that have been provided on this for the employment inside of the City of Berry, the three parcels that I could actually even identify have come back anywhere from a third to a half of what is said to be ready for industrial development. Is there any way that we can take a second look at that, sir?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. And if I may, just perhaps lay out exactly how we came to our supply figure. So, the, if lands were designated for environmental use or natural heritage system, they were not included in our supply numbers. But what we also did was we looked at all lands that were designated for employment use, and we either visited the sites, or we looked at them, you know, we looked at photographs of them. And we excluded ourselves areas that we thought had some kind of environmental constraints on them. So I certainly think it's important that our assumptions about what is available for use are tested by staff, and that they match with staff's understanding about what's on the ground, and we're certainly happy to do that. But I just want to be clear that we did not include any lands that were designated for NHS constraints, and to the extent that we were able to check ourselves, we did so and excluded further. But I'm not sure about what's on the screen right now. If for further reference, map 3 in our report shows, depicts where the lands that we've excluded from the vacant supply.
Thank you, Ms. Banfield.
Thanks, Mayor Nettle. So in this instance, for this particular property, you can see the underlying zoning is the purple color. So I think what Hemsen is suggesting is they might not have captured this one, because the zoning is actually employment lands, but we know that there's the different overlays that would impact, even though the zoning says industrial, we know that if an application came in, we'd have to define the feature, and we'd have to potentially, it's not even just so much about defining the feature, it's the fact that often you have to keep a distance from the feature, and then that's when the actual developable land gets smaller than the net, the big parcel. And the only piece that you actually see that doesn't have that imprint or any sort of, is actually the existing studio. Everything else around it has some impact. There was, just again, because we're talking about numbers, there was an old draft plan that ultimately expired, but it was at about, 35% of the whole parcel was going to be impacted by these features, and then again, possibly more when they were actually defined and dedicated and rezoned, and all those sorts of things.
Thank you. So I guess my, I don't want to go too far on one property. I looked at three properties, I found three issues. There's probably 75 of them that don't have any issues, and I'm all good with that. I don't think that, you know, the mayor should be the one who determines whether it is or isn't, but somebody's got to come with the science that says that the information that's being provided is 100% accurate. And if it is 100% accurate, then we fully endorse it, and if it needs to be corrected, then we need it to be corrected. But I'll leave that point there. Can I jump over to the slide with regards to the residential growth that says, essentially does compare, and I'm sorry, Stefan, we're going to have to ask you to share your screen again, that shows the residential numbers for the different municipalities?
Is it this one, Mr. Mayor?
Sorry, could you share your screen again, if that's okay? Because it keeps kicking you off every time I, there we go, perfect. Yes, sir. Thank you, yes. So I think at this point, you had said, and I'm not sure if it's on the screen now or not, but you had said that the City of Berry would need to be 100 persons and jobs per hectare in order to make up the ground and meet the provincial growth targets by 2051. Is that correct?
Yeah, this is the, this is our estimate of what the density might reasonably need to be on the vacant lands where there's no current applications.
Amazing, thank you. I wanted to ask you, in Vaughan and Markham, I mean, those are, those are big cities with big buildings and lots going on. How difficult do you think it would be for us to actually hit the provincial targets, given that we need to be almost 50% more dense on the remaining lands than those cities are?
Extremely difficult, Mr.
Would you say it's impossible?
Well, I wouldn't want to say anything's impossible. And remember, we're looking like 25 years into the future. So, I mean, all of this is, all of these are estimates, you know? But I would say that it would, it would not be prudent to plan now on the basis of this happening.
Right. Thank you. And then the final slide where you showed, it may not be the final, maybe the second final, the one where you showed the two scenarios, where there's the scenario for our housing catching up on a little bit more, and then there's the scenario that you thought was a little bit more rational and likely. It's slide 25? Counselor Congo, you're good at this. So on this slide, it's scenario 2 that you're saying is more likely what the need is, just based on the density targets, et cetera. And in there, you've also identified that there needs to be about 300 hectares of employment land. And I, to members of council, I had said it was 2/3, 1/3. It looks like a little bit less than that, when it's on the screen here. 6/30 for community area, which is residential, and then 300 for employment need, for a total of 930 hectares. And, sorry, I just want to put it in a language I think, at least I deal with more commonly, which would be acres. So 930 hectares is around 2,298 acres, is that around right? CAO?
Mayor Nettle, in the interest of time, I can confirm your calculation, it's just shy of 2,300 acres, yes.
And Stefan, if I could ask this question, because we did ask this privately, and so I just want to make sure we asked this publicly. This 2,298 acres is of designated usable land, and does not include natural heritage or environmentally protected lands, is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Okay, thank you. I'm going to give up the microphone. There'll be some very relieved individuals, both on TV and in the chambers. And we're going to ask members of council, I'm going to start with Counselor Ritma, any other, Counselor Harvey? Okay, Counselor Ritma, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just staying with that slide, page 26, yeah. Earlier on in your presentation, you said that there was no real case for additional industrial land in Berry, for Berry. And here on this slide, you're suggesting we need another 300 hectares.
Point of order, Mayor Lehman? It's been a long day, Mayor Nettle. Point of order.
Yes, Counselor.
Through you, if I can, to the speaker right now, Counselor Ritma, don't you do planning consultant work for industrial developers in the south end, south of Berry? I just wanted to address that specifically to the question you're asking to staff. So, Mayor Nettle, I don't know if that's kind of, you know, conflict of interest or peculiar interest, excuse me?
I will, I'll leave conflicts to individual members to work out with our integrity commissioner. I'm not the speaker with regards to conflicts of interest, but I do manage the meeting. So I will, I will leave that to Counselor Ritma to determine, and go forth from there.
This is a general question, has, doesn't have anything to do with projects that our mayor may not be working on at the moment in other municipalities, so I don't think there's a conflict myself, but I can check with the integrity commissioner if you felt that would be important. This is just to clarify some of the numbers on the.
If I still have the floor, through you, Mayor Nettle. The reason I bring this up, the speaker has a point about specific projects, but this is about macro policy. So for example, in previous vote a couple of months ago, I thought I didn't have a conflict of interest on the CIP. The integrity commissioner told me that I did. I thought it was a general questions about a general policy that everybody has access to, and she specifically said you do. So because we're talking about annexation, is do we annex up to the north? It's very, it's realistic for someone to presume that if we do annex lands for the purpose of industrial to the north, there'll be less pent-up demand in the south, and vice versa. That's why I wanted to obviously call the point of order before we, I don't want another wrench in this whole process to be like, hey, there was an improper discussion theoretically. So that's why the due diligence is needed on this specifically, because I also thought it had absolutely no conflict on the CIP, and she deemed it, on the writing of the CIP, because we were revising a couple of months ago, and she deemed that I did.
If you could just give me a moment, please. So I've just confirmed, I can't rule on a conflict of interest, whether there is one or isn't one. So Counselor Ritma, that's, there's been a point brought up, I'm going to leave that to you. If you decide not to ask the question, you can still ask the question of Hemsen through email as an individual resident, but after having declared if there is a conflict. And if there's not, you can just ask the question anyway. So I'll leave it to you, but I can't give a judgment.
I understand that, Mr. Mayor, and out of an abundance of caution, I'll, I won't ask the question. But I'm assuming, like, I do industrial work only, so if I switch to residential, I'm thinking that that should be all right. I think, anyway.
I wish I could say I think so too, but I don't want to indicate something that isn't accurate, so I apologize.
All right, well, maybe I can ask this question. The, in terms of the residential, are you, are you working with the number of 300, or rather, 300,000 population for City Berry in 2051? Is that the number that you're working with?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That's a number I should know off the top of my head, but I don't without looking it up in the report. But suffice to say that whatever the population target is for the City of Berry in 2051 in your official plan, that's the number that we've used to assess lands.
Okay, all right. So that's 298,000, I think. I guess the question that I would put to you is, is that number realistic? Given your comments that we're not hitting our housing targets, our population targets now, and given that we're not having enough babies to keep our population stable, and so we're, growth in Canada is really dependent on what the level of immigration is going to be. So I'm wondering if you have any particular insight into what the level of immigration is going to be in the future? Because that's, that's going to drive our population increase, I would think, and will determine what kind of housing we need as well. So any thoughts on that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Counselor, for such an easy question. So a couple of things, I guess. The, the population figure that was established for the city's official plan was a target that was established as part of the provincial, the now defunct provincial growth plan for the Greater Gold Shield. And that forecast was done some years ago, around 2019, 2020, based on, largely on 2016 census data. So it is a little bit out of date. However, it was premi- However, it was premised on, in large part, on fertility and mortality trends that were present at the time. And so, you know, those won't have changed too much between now and, between then and now. But they also would have incorporated assumptions about migration as well. And on the immigration side of things, those forecasts would have predated the significant increase in immigration targets that were implemented by the federal government over the last few years. And so the recent announcements that those immigration targets are to, are to be reduced in the next few years brings those targets much more into line with the targets that were assumed when the 298,000 was established. But of course, the main source of growth in Berry is not, is not people having babies, and it's not so much immigration. It is the migration of people from the GTA northward to the city. And that is still, and will continue to be, the major source of population and housing growth in the city over the long term in the future. And how that might change, a lot of that has got to do with the supply of land for housing in the city. So I, I was sort of being a bit facetious when I said it was an easy question. It's an extremely difficult question. We did not, as part of the stage of the work, try to update the long-term forecast for the city of Berry, because we wanted to work within the framework of your official plan, because, you know, a lot is tied to that. If the city feels that it's an important part of the stage three work to revise that forecast, we certainly have the expertise to do that work. But I think we'd need direction and agreement from the participating municipalities. That was an element of, of the work.
Okay, thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, I'll leave the rest of my questions.
Thank you, Counselor. I'm now going to go to Counselor Harvey.
Actually, I no longer have a question, as I, through the conversation, was able to get the answer that I needed. Thank you.
Any other questions from members of council? I think Counselor Corser, you wanted to ask about the, the map earlier. Is that, do you want me to bring, have that brought back up?
Yes, please, if you could.
Wonderful. Madam Clerk, we're testing you tonight, aren't we? The one with all five, all five pieces? The one with all, all the five, oh, sorry. Okay, wonderful. Is it on the five pieces or on the report? Okay. Stephen, I'm just going to put you on deck that you're going to have to add yourself again after we remove this, this map for the third time. Which is probably my fault, Stephen, because I should have just answered the question earlier. Counselor Corser.
I just wanted to get a better view of where the locations are.
Yeah, if you like, we can have Madam Clerk circulate that to you as well.
That would be fantastic, thank you.
Yeah, wonderful. Okay, Stephen, back to you. So we're going to remove the map now from the screen, and then you'll have to continue to be a caring person and share your screen.
I am, yeah, there we go.
Sorry, Counselor Hamilton, it's you.
Sorry, thank you. And through you, Mayor Nettle. I just, I want to go back to, I think, an important point that you made as I'm trying to digest all of this, because I'm feeling a little bit perplexed while I appreciate the report and the presentation tonight. So it's my question that I was hoping to have answered through all of this, is having a good understanding of what our current state of employment lands is, so we can look to see if we are going to be meeting future need based on future growth. So for that, we need to know where do we sit currently, what employment lands are available versus where do we need to be by 2051. But I'm left feeling not knowing our current state, considering that the assessment they did just looked at the zoning of employment lands, but didn't actually look at what is, what is developable land. And the three that you checked were not congruent, there was obviously some discrepancies there. And so you mentioned that you would work with staff, and I'm just wondering what point that, that happens. To me, I'm feeling a little bit underwhelmed in the sense that we've just spent a little bit of money, a lot of money, on a consultation report, and it missed, to me, what I think is a key piece. So is this something that's left to a phase three? Is this something that gets dealt with now that consultants will go back and rectify what I think is a pretty large omission? So I just wanted to understand what the next steps would be on that piece.
And Counselor Hamilton, I think, to be fair, right, there's a plethora of incredible work here. There were some, like, I could only check three, because I just don't know how to check the legal address. So I think that as part of stage three, we could ask that the direction include verification of the current needs for the city of Berry for, you know, a future staff report that'll come back. And I think that we need that verification no matter what, and it may be that there's, maybe our environmental mapping is wrong, right? Like, there's lots of things that could be the reason, but I just want to make sure that we have it all completely correct, and I, you know, you do, just, just hearing from you. So we're going to give direction out tonight in the direct motion portion of the evening, and you could add that in as an amendment if that is something you would like to.
Yeah, I think at the end of the day, I mean, this is a big, big decision, right? And I think, as I said, the whole intent of this report, in my opinion, was to actually understand what the need is, right? If Berry needs to enhance its boundaries, expand our boundaries, because we don't have enough existing supply, and it just didn't seem to answer the question. So even to have to move to a phase three, it just seems to me we've missed some key information here. And I'm not negating the fact that there was a ton of good information done here, and this is a very complex question, but I think this is ultimately the question that most residents, and I know, I'm only speaking of a half, we're 10, like, this is what we're interested in knowing. The other piece, and I will fully admit, I don't have a planning background, so I'm also just trying to understand this from an average layperson's lens, but just in terms of the definition of employment lands, and I know we briefly touched upon this, but I've tried to look into a little bit. So I understand the definition of employment lands has recently changed in October, and I'm just wondering, maybe I'll direct this question to Ms. Banfield. I'm assuming that this report is also using the new definition of employment lands, which refers in what I think I believe is just to employment lands that are used for manufacturing purposes, and removes some of the entry-level employment-type businesses that we would have seen in the previous definition.
Through you, Mayor Nettle, to Counselor Hamilton. You'd have to ask, I think, Hemson what they, if they took out the different definition. I would suspect they have not, because it is, they, they've been working on this for months, and the definition just changed, as I said, at the end of October. So I would suspect they've included, in terms of the designation, that's the employment, employment area designation, the employment, non-employment, non-industrial employment, and then restricted industrial, so restricted employment. So those are kind of the designations in the official plan, so I would suspect that that's what Hemson used. And understanding with the change coming forward, that's something that staff are going to have to bring back to council. The, the practical implications of that policy change by the province is that some of those, what would, those industrial employment areas that look a little bit more quasi-retail, most likely, we haven't quite gotten to the end result, but most likely are going to look more like a commercial designation versus employment. So as, again, we're not, we're not there, we're not at that end result, but ultimately that's one of the biggest changes, is that from an employment land perspective, it's going to have to be a bit more pure employment, jobs, factories, data centers, distribution centers, those types of things, whereas some of the more, as I said, quasi-retail, most likely would be looking to move to a commercial zone.
So if I may, through you, so I think that's a very important nuance, because again, as I think we're looking to the future, we are really trying to look at industrial land, right? And this is really looking at more the commercial type uses. So that distinction, I hope, will be captured, and I'm not sure if it can be, in phase three activities, or, I don't know what the timeline is.
Through you, Mayor Nettle, to Counselor Hamilton, it really is a bigger conversation, and I don't want to belabor it here, but, I mean, it is going to impact our total numbers, for sure. It's going to impact our total jobs. And then there also is a change in the provincial policy statement, the planning policy statement, that looks at the ability to do employment land conversions, which, under the growth plan, you could never do unless you did a municipal comprehensive review, and that has also changed, which ultimately could put more pressure on our employment lands in the future, because where we used to be able to say, nope, you can't do an employment land conversion because of the growth plan, we don't have that anymore. And if we are approached, we're going to have to process that and deal with that as a staff, and there's going to be a council decision as well. So it's very complex, and I don't want to muddy the waters further here, but there's so many pressures on employment land that we do have, and that's not going to change in the future, it's probably going to be more pressure.
Thank you for that, because I think that's really helpful background and context for at least us to be aware of. I know there's a lot of moving parts, and I think I'll just say, I, I'm glad I'm not sitting where you are at this point, Ms. Banfield, or Mr. Hemson. I do, I do understand the nuances here, but again, I think context is important, so I'll leave it at that, but thank you.
I have Counselor Morales, and then Counselor Harris. Counselor Morales, do you mind if I just ask a follow-up quickly on that? Do we have any indication on what that change would mean in percentage of our industrial lands at this point? Like, is it 5% or is it 50%? Or is it, we'll get back to you later on? You'll get back to us later on. Okay, wonderful. Over to Counselor Morales.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. Got a, typed up a couple of good questions here. Thank you for the comments, Counselor, questions, and comments, Counselor Hamilton. I definitely appreciate the comments that were said earlier on the moving targets on immigration numbers. Hopefully those, you know, go down. I would just be blunt, not adjusted. We're, we are definitely in a, in a housing shortage, housing crisis. But regardless, wherever the, the immigration numbers go, I think it just needs to be clearly stated, and so I'll state it for myself, that we just need more housing. And I think if anybody has any questions that maybe we won't need as much housing in Berry, I think just ask any 22 to 35-year-old with a university degree that's living in your basement. Just simple as that. Ask them, do we need more housing? Because they can't get the $800 a month, cheap basement apartments anymore. They can't even get the 25, they can't even get the $1,800 for a full house, you know, rental, and they can't even qualify for, to buy their own house. I have, and it's not just a Ward 1 thing, where I have residents in my Ward, Mayor Nettle, who have been longtime residents. They lived on Big Bay Point for 24 years, for 37 years, that house back when Big Bay Point was too. They have Western-educated engineers, accountants, and it's just more than just one example. And they make $90,000 to $140,000 they can't qualify for housing to buy. So I'm glad that had the effect in the room right now that it did. So here's my question to the presenter. You commented that it's always a good idea to have, and I'm kind of paraphrasing the words here, but you made a general comment, that it's always a good idea to have a delta of a surplus of employment land capacity. Is that correct? Just confirming? To have a little bit more than possibly need, to have some flexibility? Correct?
Yes. It's through you, Mr. Mayor. It's always good to have choice for someone who wants to locate in the city.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, so I have a perspective on why that is, but obviously you had a long presentation, lots of great material. Could you elaborate a little bit specifically on why you feel this is important? That choice for the market, the interests, the reality?
Well, again, through you, Mr. Mayor, I mean, different, the needs are different for different types of industries and different types of businesses. So, you know, if you've only got one site that's vacant and available, then that may not cater to the needs of all the people who might be interested in locating in the city. So, you know, not, not everyone needs the same size of land, the same configuration, the same access to the highway, the same location near another type of industry, you know, is delivering trucks north of the city rather than south of the city. So, you know, the, the needs are varied, and therefore the supply needs to reflect that diversity.
Perfect. So would it be fair to characterize some of the sentiments expressed as with planning macro policy like this? Nothing, things don't really go according to plan. The market doesn't respond as quickly or as, or as fast as it does, whether it's residential, how long did we wait for the secondary planned lands to finally go onto grid? We expected them to, developers start building on 2018, didn't really move till 2021, 2022, 2023. So for, would it be fair to say that things don't go according to policy? The market doesn't necessarily respond to the planning? As great as the planning may be, things don't necessarily go according to plan? And so, again, like you said, there needs to be excess capacity for different interests and appetites.
Yes, I would agree, Mr. Mayor, that, you know, one, another good reason to have, you know, some vacant supply is to, you know, deal with the, you know, the fact that, you know, estimates that are made 10, 20 years in advance may not be entirely accurate.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you, Mr. Hemson. Those are all the questions for you. I'm just going to close it here with some quick comments. Mayor Nettle, nothing goes according to plan. The best example I can think of is Ward 9, Ward 9-1. So the employment needs report policy envisioned Mapleview Drive East in Ward 9. So think of Huronia, the Gulf Range there and the plaza. Envisioned that to be, to develop out similar to Mapleview Drive West. So think of Canadian Tire, a couple of those factories and warehouses, things of that nature. It envisioned a similar build-out. That was an envision that happened late 90s, early, like, the single 2000s. It didn't happen. What we ended up seeing in that side of Mapleview Drive was strip plazas and some housing a little bit further east, and then nothing else. It didn't get the industrial. And the previous term of council, there was a push to do a land conversion, to move it away from industrial, because there was, at that time, there was somebody who wanted to build a grocery store, which was very much in the east Berry, and possibly some seniors' housing. What I'm getting at is, nothing goes according to plan, and when we don't have excess capacity, because going back to the presentation, you know, it's not as strong of an argument as the PowerPoint said, maybe for industrial, it is for residential, but if you're going to do one, you might as well do all of them. I don't, I personally don't want us to miss out on once-in-a-generation opportunities if we don't have the surplus delta. And that may be the next Honda, that may be the next major employer. I'm not talking warehouses, I'm talking careers, I'm talking life-changing opportunities and prosperity for the people of Berry and, and the younger generations. And up until 2017, all I ever heard from a Schlichter was, here's another report of city-owned land ready to be sold for industrial. Here's another report, counsel, now somebody else wants to buy it. And I, this is actually a question I'll direct to Ms. Schlichter. Off the top of my head, up until about 2017, 2017, I think it was, we had land available, and then there came one of those final reports where you said, that's it? All city-owned holdings meant for industrial are sold. So I guess my question to you is, I don't want to put you on the spot, you don't have to tell me a month, but was that roughly 2017, 2018, when that reality came, came to be?
Through you, Mayor Nettle, to Counselor Morales. I don't have the data in front of me, but I believe it was prior to 2020, so in that timeframe is, would be close to accurate.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Schlichter. And Mayor Nettle, I joined you last year on a tour of a business on Saunders, right on the border of Ward 9, technically Ward 8. You didn't actually invite me, I was trying to bug you about another issue, and I wouldn't let you go, so you're like, just hop in the car. Because it was a really important issue, and so no members of council feel left out. That's, that's how you do it. And literally it was to talk to you about this issue on the way there and back. And we toured a business, right? And one of the comments about that is how happy they were with the growth they expected. There were a couple local, local people who were like, you know, in their early 40s, they had gone to high school, local high schools, they were, you know, part of long-term Berry families. And they said, and it's going so well, we're going to move out of Berry. Like, we have to go to Craighurst, I think, I'm not going to go into anything specific plan details. We'd love to stay in town, but we just can't, because we don't have the capacity. And you were like, let's see if we can find you something, whether, again, we don't have anything in city holdings, but that's unfortunate. And what I remember walking away, I probably stopped bugging you about it, I was trying to bug you, and I said, wow, what a sad reality. They're from Berry, raised in Berry, employ some people they even went to high school with, they want to continue growing and providing opportunities, and, and the reality is they can't. And anyways, that is why, while that summary might say technically the case is in a strong, more residential, but if you're going to do it, do it all at once, I am supportive of obviously the general intent. I don't want to miss out on once-in-a-lifetime generation opportunities. I know how rigid the land conversion policy is, and rightly so, because we need to protect land for jobs and, and, and housing land for housing. But knowing that nothing goes according to plan, and seeing the realities I saw with you when I filibustered my way into your car on a tour, I think this is the right opportunity. I said this on social media a couple of days ago, when I meet people in the community, I don't, I may know where they're from, but I don't segment people and go, he's from Mithurst, he's from Shannie Bay, you know, he's from Craighurst, he's from the east end of Berry, no matter how special Ward 1 is. And the reality is, at the end of the day, all these people that are part of our community, they're from, they're from the region, if you want to call it. Let's take away the name. from the region, if you want to call it. Let's take away the name Barry. They're, they're part of our community. And so I don't, I'm personally not going to let an invisible imaginary line hold back the promise of some potential opportunity for the residents of Barry and elsewhere. So I'll be supportive of the general intent.
Thank you, Counselor. And Aerowex was where we, where we went. And it was you, me, Deputy Mayor, maybe? And maybe Counselor Negusi was there as well? I think, yeah. Counselor Harris, I didn't invite you to your own ward. So I don't know what was wrong with me that day, but there was clearly something wrong with me. I apologize. Over to you.
I was busy at work that day. That's okay. Thank you, Mayor Nettle. Through you to, I apologize, I won't attempt your last name, Stefan. So apologies for that. On slide 26, the title kind of caught me as it said, two broad options for addressing land needs. And that made me think of the last two words in Barry needs land. Is that, is that fair as a summary that in all of what we see here today, that Barry needs land?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think that if Barry is to achieve the population target in its official plan, it needs more land.
Great. Thank you. And on that slide, 26, there's two options. And I, am I correct that they're not provided as recommendations?
They are not recommendations.
Okay. Thank you. And on the prior slide, you mentioned the importance of development of complete communities. Of those two options, option one and option two, which one is better planning and more likely to complete, to create a complete community?
Well, through you, Mr. Mayor, that's a, that's a difficult question to answer. Because, you know, a complete community is, is not something that we can measure necessarily. But really what a complete community is describing is a, is a place where people can not just live, but also, you know, work fairly close to home and, you know, shop and do all the sort of necessary, you know, chores for daily, daily living within a fairly close proximity to their home. And so you do, as part of, you know, measuring completeness, if you like, you know, you do want to look at things like the ratio of jobs to people. And that will be different from place to place because, you know, different communities are different. But, you know, you don't want, if you have a low ratio of jobs to people, then that's usually a bit of a red flag when, when looking at completeness. So I'm not sure that I can be definitive about which of these two options is going to be more of a complete community for Barry or Springwater and Oremodonte without a bit more analysis. But certainly, option one would, would, would translate into Barry having by 2051, fewer people relative to its job base than option two.
Thank you. And just through you, Mayor Nettle, would, would option one be more, would there be more risk of option one leaning towards like urban sprawl, less defined and clear growth?
Well, again, through you, Mr. Mayor, and I apologize to the counselor, but you know, urban sprawl too, as, is not a very precisely defined term. So I'm, I'm a little hesitant to sort of say that one of these options represents sprawl, whereas the other one doesn't, even if it's a matter of degrees. So these two options are perfectly viable options. And there are examples of municipalities that operate with servicing agreements and regional governance. And you can look down to the GTA for a good example of that. And there are other jurisdictions where the general pattern of growth is the large city just annexes land, annexes land every time it, it needs it and grows outwards, like the city of Calgary. So, you know, these are perfectly reasonable options based, and they can both be based on good planning principles, provided they're, they're done properly. And of course, the devil's in the details in some respects. But we certainly wouldn't want to imply that one of these options is, you know, deficient because it's going to result in sprawl.
All right. And maybe one further question. Is, again, this is not my area of expertise in any way, shape or form. So thank you for all of your answers. Next steps, final slide. It talks about discuss possible stage three work. Will the work in stage three help us to get some of those answers of clarity around, around whether option one or option two would be the preferred option for, as you noted in slide 25, developing a more complete community?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. That, that would be the, the overarching goal of stage three, not just to decide which of these two options is, is preferred, but also if it's going to be option two, what kind of configuration and size of annexation area might be and the location.
Great. Thank you.
Members of, of council, any other questions? Counselor Negusi.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. We're talking about employment land, but I believe we missed one thing about our residents who are working outside of their city. So my question to Stefan is, is there an estimate for the number of residents who travel and work outside of the three municipalities? Do you have any number?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I, I don't have a number off the top of my head, looking at all three municipalities. But I can just speak, if I may, very briefly about commuting patterns in the city of Barry. So Barry is a rather interesting place from a commuting perspective. There's a significant amount of people who, you know, leave Barry in the morning and drive south to a job. There's an almost equivalent number of people who arrive in Barry from the northern part, from north of the city to work in Barry. So the actual net commuting in Barry is almost zero, because you get the same number of people coming in from the north to work as do leave to work in the south.
Okay. Mayor Nettle, I recall you mentioning that approximately 10, 20,000 cars are leaving our city in daily work purpose?
I think it, I think over 30 minutes was 40,000 vehicles. And I'm going on memory from two years ago. And I don't know what COVID has done to those numbers, but that was probably 2019 census. If that was the year, maybe it was 2020 census.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. I asked our staff Bella and he assisted me with that 40,000. Thank you, Bella. Can you put that document on the screen, please? I would like to share a document with the audience and those who are watching from home. Just from the environmental perspective, the carbon emission for one car traveling from Barry to Toronto and back are approximately 0.5% metric ton carbon dioxide. This figure is based on just a medium car size. With 40,000 car making the trip, the total carbon emission is, amount is about 2,000 metric ton per day, 10,000 metric tons weekly, and about 480,000 metric tons annually. This number is only from our city, from the city of Barry to close to Toronto. But it can be assumed that it will be higher when the numbers are, you know, from the two municipalities are added. So imagine if we resolve this boundary issue and create a minimum of 10,000 jobs within the next few years, we could reduce one quarter of the carbon emission problem. And we can give a better hope for our young generation as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor. Now, I think I want to, if I can, Counselor Morales, because we're in a presentation piece and I've been really, really, really liberal interpreting the laws here. So I think that we should proceed from the presentation to the direct motion so that the actual debate portion can happen. And I would like to thank, Stefan, I'd like to thank you. I was unable to say your last name. So you were adopted Hempson tonight, I noticed a couple of times. That is, this is not Mr. Hempson. Although, although you'll probably get teased at work now being Mr. Hempson. So Stefan, thank you to you and your team. Because I know you obviously were the lead, but you had lots of other people helping and working this through, including our facilitator who's been working with the city of Barry, with Springwater Township, with Oremodonte, with the County of Simcoe through this process. And, you know, I know how difficult it is getting scrutinized by one set of politicians, but you just got scrutinized by four sets of politicians in, I think about four or five hours, Stefan, if I'm not mistaken. And that is a, a feat that I never want to have to go through myself. So thank you for all the work that you've done. Thank you to your team. Thank you for the information and the depth, because it was, it was very deep. And while there's some things that I just didn't know or understand, I think it's really important that you've provided that information to all of us, because we can use good information to make good decisions. And I really believe that you've been able to, to do that for us here tonight. So thank you so much, Stefan, for your, for your presentation and work.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We're going to move past this point to direct motions, as we had amended the, we'd amended the agenda for this evening. And I believe Deputy Mayor Thompson has a without notice motion? Okay. Deputy Mayor Thompson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Nettle. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Harvey, that pursuant to section 7.1 of the procedural bylaw 2019-100, as amended, permission to be granted to introduce a motion without notice concerning joint land need assessment.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Harvey, that pursuant to section 7.1 of the procedural bylaw 2019-100, as amended, permission be granted to introduce a motion without notice concerning joint land needs assessment. Any questions or comments with regards to the direct motion without notice from members of council? I'm seeing none. All those in favor? It carries. Deputy Mayor.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Harvey. Whereas the city of Barry is forecasted to experience significant population, employment growth to 2051. And whereas to address this growth, Hampson Consulting was jointly retained to evaluate the needs for additional employment and residential lands at the boundaries of the city of Barry, town of Springwater and city of Barry and town of Oremodonte. Whereas the findings of the joint need analysts to study stage one and two, completed by Hampson Consulting, deemed that there is a need for an additional 930 hectares, which is translated into 2,298 acres of land for comprehensive community employment areas, used residential development in the city of Barry, which could be addressed through a boundary adjustment. Whereas the study finding of the vacant lands within the city of Barry were identified, that natural heritage areas exist within the vacant lands, with several of the parcels of land being vacant within Barry's existing boundaries as a result of them being undevelopable, was not addressed as part of the study. And whereas upon review of the 2009 Barry Innisville Annexation Bill 196, adjustment the city of Barry's boundaries to include 2,293 hectares of land, with 61% of this being deemed developable and the remaining being natural heritage environmentally protected. And whereas upon review of the previous data and in consideration of lands within the city of Barry, it would be reasonable to consider the approximately 60% of the lands within the new expansion area would be developable. And whereas the city of Barry owns most vacant parcels of land surrounding Little Lake, and whereas the city of Barry will be working with the province of Ontario to establish a protection plan for the lands, the lands surrounding Little Lake. And whereas for the city to achieve the 2,300 acres of developable land, as identified within the Hampson study, the city of Barry would require approximately 4,000 acres of gross land, a much larger number than proposed in the city of Barry to the township of Springwater and Oremodonte. Whereas it is understood by all parties that there will be no service providers to, provided to subject neighboring municipalities without a boundary adjustment. And therefore be resolved that given the information contained within the joint needs analyst and study, study stage one and two, completed by Hampson Consulting, that the city of Barry experienced with development lands within the city boundary and historically experienced within the 2009 annexation, the intended land request proposed to the town of Springwater and Oremodonte be reassessed to better respect the identified the city, demonstrate the need for vacant land required for comprehensive community employment lands and residential housing in order to meet provincial targets, and that an update request to include Little Lake lands in addition to 4,000 acres of gross land be forwarded to the province of Ontario. The provincial land facilitator will, with a request for this matter to be dealt with in an expedition manner, that the mayor and CEO can continue with meeting identified by the province land facilitator to negotiate, and an update to the city of Barry's border with neighboring municipalities and staff report back on January 8, 2025 with the scope of work to proceed with stage three to identify Barry's boundary with neighboring municipalities.
Okay. Members of council, I have to read this. Okay. I do. I just got the non-singing after. Just going to do as I'm told. It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Harvey. The title is Joint Land Needs Assessment. Whereas the city of Barry is forecast to experience significant population and employment growth to 2051. Whereas to address this growth, Hampson Consulting was jointly retained to evaluate the need for additional employment and residential lands at the boundaries of the city of Barry and the town of Springwater and the city of Barry and the township of Oremodonte. And whereas the findings of the joint needs analysis and study stage one and two, completed by Hampson Consulting, determined that there is a need for an additional 930 hectares, 2,298 acres of land for comprehensive community employment area uses and residential development in the city of Barry, which could be addressed through a boundary adjustment. And whereas the study findings of the vacant lands within the city of Barry were identified, the natural heritage areas that exist within these vacant lands, with several of the parcels of land being vacant within Barry's existing boundary, as a result of them being undevelopable, undevelopable, say that three times fast, was not addressed as part of the study. And whereas upon review of the 2009 Barry Innisville Annexation Bill 196, adjusted the city of Barry's boundary to include 2,293 hectares of land, with 61% of it being deemed developable and the remaining being natural heritage environmentally protected. And whereas upon review of the previous data and consideration of lands within the city of Barry, it would be reasonable to consider that approximately 60% of lands within a new expanded area would be developable. And whereas the city of Barry owns most vacant parcels of land around, surrounding, sorry, Little Lake. And whereas the city of Barry will be working with the province of Ontario to establish a protection plan for the lands surrounding Little Lake. And whereas for the city to achieve the 2,300 acres of developable land is identified within the Hampson study, the city of Barry will require approximately 4,000 acres of gross land, a much larger number than initially proposed by the city of Barry to the townships of Springwater and Oremodonte. And whereas it is understood by all parties that there will be no servicing provided to the subject neighboring municipalities without a boundary adjustment. Therefore be it resolved that given the information contained within the joint needs analysis and study stage one and two, completed by Hampson Consulting, the cities, city of Barry's experience with developable lands within the city's boundary and historical experience with the 2009 annexation, the initial land requests and proposals to the townships of Springwater and Oremodonte be reassessed to better respect and identify the city's demonstrated need for vacant land Little Lake area lands in addition to the 4,000 acres of gross land be forwarded to the province of Ontario and the provincial land facilitator with a request for this matter to be dealt with in an expeditious manner, and that the mayor and CAO continue with the meeting identified by the provincial land facilitator to negotiate an update to the city of Barry's border with neighbouring municipalities and staff report back on January 8, 2025, with the scope of work to proceed with stage three to identify Barry's border with neighbouring municipalities. Before I go to councillor Hamilton, who has an amendment based on the questions that were asked earlier, I just want to get some clarity. Ms. Banfield, was there a guesstimate that we had with regards to the change in the definition for industrial land?
Yes, Mayor Nardal, the calculation is about 20%. So of our total employment land, about 20% of it is the non-industrial designation. And so that's, at first blush, that's kind of what we're looking at, a reduction of about 20% of our total employment land in the official plan as it is today.
Sorry, members of council, I'm trying to use my phone to calculate what that is, so I apologize. So that would remove, that would change it from 793 hectares down to 634.5 hectares of employment land currently in the city of Barry. So even assuming that I'm completely wrong about the mapping earlier, and I might be, we're still a 20% below what had been suggested. So we're going to move on to the actual amendment, and I want to be, just before, sorry, councillor Hamilton, I know, I feel, I want to be fair to Hampson, like, the planning world is changing daily in Ontario right now. It's not fair, it's not really fair that that change, it was in the scope of that report, or not in the scope of the report, when it was just 30 some odd days old, so to be fair to Hampson and Stephen and his team, but it doesn't change the fact that it was done. Councillor.
Thank you for that. Completely agree, and not undermining any of the work that was completed. But I do have an amendment to put on the floor. It is moved by myself and seconded by councillor Morales, that the direct motion concerning the joint lands needs assessment be amended as follows, that as part of the report back, staff verify the developable industrial land needs identified by Hampson. And I don't think I need to speak to that based on the discussion that took place.
to work into it, and it's perfect, it'll just be added to the end after a comma. Would you like to speak to this, or?
No, I don't think so, based on the conversation, unless people have questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any other member of council like to ask questions or speak to the motion? I'm seeing none, so all those in favour of the motion, amendments, sorry? That's approved and on the main motion as amended. Are there any comments or questions? I've got councillor Morales, I've got councillor Harvey, I've got councillor Reetma.
Thank you, Mayor Nardal. There was, there was a very telling duality in the presentation tonight. Intensification is not desired, Mayor Nardal, yet if we don't annex lands, intensification is the only way forward. Real painful, makes you heavy, makes you angry about living in your neighbourhood, intensification. So the interesting duality of that is, the data is clear, Hampson Group was clear about that. And so, you know, just a couple of weeks ago, we had the zoning public meeting, and some people think, some people don't want an intensification, some people think they don't want to, they, some is fine, just not everywhere. Some people were very micro, but a specific area, which by the way, to those people have actually come a long ways on a specific area. Reach out to me if you want to chat further. But this report is clear. There's two paths forward, and without annexation, it will be, there's no other pathway forward, and it will be painful. So I think it's just important, food for thought, there was a lot of material that was consumed tonight, and I think it's extremely important to just say that, because, you know, I don't want any members of the committee to advocate against their own interests, what they value. And sometimes we have to make choices. We make choices as councillors, tough, painful choices, and sometimes members of the public can also, also have to make tough, painful choices on what they advocate for and what they prioritize. And again, nothing ever happens the way we want, and that's not to say that if we go through annexation, intensification isn't required. I think, you know, obviously, it's a, it's a, it's in this imperfect middle that is where the, where the outcome goes. And as Ms. Banfield will probably tell, remind us, one thing is what we want the market to do, and then another thing's what they end up doing, because we can't force them to do it. We don't live in a country where we can just mandate and build subdivisions and go forward. So that is an extremely important duality, Mayor Nardal, that I think needs to be reminded, because the contrast could not be more clear.
Thank you, councillor. I've got, next on the speakers list is councillor Harvey, then I have councillor Reetma.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Nardal. Obviously, it's a very concise report, 50 some odd pages, and obviously, this was one of our longer slide presentations that we've had at council, too, at, I think, 28 slides by the, by the time he was done. But I think you really only have to go to slide 25, where it tells everything. And here is a outside Toronto-based company, that'll be quite honest with you, my six years on the, on council, I've never even heard of, so it's very evident they have no skin in the game here with the city of Barry. And obviously, initially, the first slide, when I first started looking at this presentation before it, as soon as it went public, I wasn't expecting the end outcome to be actually what it was, because the first slide kind of made me sway that, okay, maybe we don't need this. But it just goes to show you that they've done a very concise review of everything, and shown both sides. And obviously, they're indicating right now that the initial reason that this was even started, they feel is a bit of a weak position. However, I don't believe that the 20% that Ms. Banfield just spoke about was taken into account with that. So that may change things moving forward with further review. But it's very clear that if we're going to hit our targets and have community areas that are complete and comprehensive, we can't do it within the lands that we have. And when you look at how slow it took for the lands to start getting developed from the previous annexation, I would hope that, however this all plays out, that that's not the case moving forward. Obviously, I think these lands are going to be far easier to service than the lands, especially on the Salem side, where, where I am, trying to get pipes under the 400 highway and such forth. But it just shows that the need is there, and that's why when I was approached about seconding this motion, I didn't think twice about it, because slide 25 clearly indicates what their overall outcome was from their very thorough report. And I do appreciate the way that he answered questions, too, very open, concise, and you could tell he's, he's got no skin in the game, and here to represent all parties and just provide his professional opinion on, on what his thoughts are from a planning review. And it was interesting to hear how things have changed, because I had no idea that there was a much movement in the needle in the last, especially 30 days, but that's why we always lean on our expert there, Ms. Banfield, when it comes to planning. But I do look forward to see what phase three looks like and move this forward. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. And councillor Reetma.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just have one question, really, and that is, the work that was done now, was up to this point, was only to do with Oremodonte and Springwater. Is the intention of phase three to look all the way around the city at what is the, what is the best place for us to expand? Because I do think that, you know, the case has been made, that we really need to look at additional lands for the city. I guess my question is, you know, where are we going to be looking?
Yeah, I'm going to try to answer this, and CAO pros, feel free to rein me in at any point on this. It's a tough job, but someone's got to do it. So, so the actual facilitation itself is only related to Barry, Springwater and Oremodonte, and by verdict of Springwater and Oremodonte being inside of the county of Simcoe, the county of Simcoe is at the table as well. So there's no, there's been no indication from the province of Ontario to research other municipalities other than Oremodonte and Springwater. It's been specifically constrained to those two areas, and in order for us to look anywhere else, we would require the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing to direct the provincial land facilitator to look at or consider other directions other than the directions of northeast and northwest and north. Is that right, Michael?
Mayor Nardal, that is exactly correct.
Okay, that was the answer to my question. Thanks. He didn't even need to get the reins out. That was good. When I was a kid, my mom had reins on me. I don't know if you know what I'm talking about, but, yeah, I couldn't run away. Okay, are there any other questions or comments from members of council? I'm seeing none, so all those in favour of the main motion? Gentlemen. And it carries. All right, the direct motion is now adopted and complete by council. We dealt with the announcements and inquiries earlier this evening, but we do have bylaws. So Deputy Mayor Thompson, over to you.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harvey. Leave be granted to introduce the following bills, and these bills be read a first, second and third time on this day and finally passed. Bill 138, 139 and 140.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson and seconded by councillor Harvey, that leave be granted to introduce the following bills, and these bills be read a first, second and third time this day and finally passed. Bill 138, 139 and 140. Any questions or comments with regards to the bills? I'm seeing none. All those in favour? They carry. Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harvey. Leave be granted to introduce the following bill, and this bill be read a first, second and third time and finally passed.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Harvey. It's a confirmation bylaw that leave be granted to introduce the following bill, and this bill be read a first, second and third time this day and finally passed. Bill 141. Any questions or comments with regards to the confirmation bylaw for members of council? I'm seeing none. All those in favour? It carries, on behalf of city council, before we go to the adjournment, I want to wish everybody at home a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and council as well, as well as our incredible public servants, thank you for all of the work that's been done this year. It's been a busy one, but we've had a lot of fun. So thank you so much. And I'm going to ask for a mover and a seconder. I've got councillor Kangal, and I've got councillor Nixon on the moving and seconding of the adjournment. All those in favour? It carries unanimously. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and I hope everyone has a wonderful time with their families.